Herb?
Yes.
And Zaps on the notice. Hillary? And jump is absolutely not missing. And Carly Stone?
Here.
And Koi?
Here.
All right.
My title is Studio of the United States of America and to the Republic for worship, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with whom we turn our attention and trust.
All right, first up is our PHS student report. Ryan, are you there?
Don't let it show up.
We're gonna break it. Okay.
You're good. So right underneath that screen that's highlighted in blue, post that one right underneath though?
Yeah, this one.
That one, yeah. Go ahead and click share.
It's been a while since I've been on Zoom.
Sorry, Ryan's not here today. I don't know.
And then if you want to go to the far left.
Thank you.
All right, so again, obviously, the brand high school. This will be background information for anyone that doesn't know. My name is Jack Lunschel. I'm the Brand High School Student President and the Class. Well, president. And I'm very proud of the student council vice president. So some of the recent activities we've had at Brandon is we had all of our upcoming activities, which started with our dance and we had Powerpuff. And it was a fun and a great time. And then we've also had lots of senior nights. We recently had football and then tonight is volleyball, soccer as well. And then the juniors have taken their PSAT or they're gonna take their PSAT on the seventeenth. And then we've also started to do our Hocktime, which is very exciting. Excited to see where it leads towards. Hopefully, it's a little bit better than SEL this year. And then we also had our Powerpuff winners, which were the seniors and the freshmen. And then college week was last week and it was great. And counselors sat down in the libraries all last week and we helped all the students survive, figure out all the tweaks and everything. And then we also have a late start Wednesday on the 24th. And then we have our senior meeting, which is happening. And then our upcoming activities are like Claire said, our junior PSAT, which is taking place tomorrow. And we also have a choir concert this, I believe it's Wednesday. And then we have a band festival coming up too. And then we have another band concert coming up. We have speakers coming in to talk to seniors about financial aid, which will be very helpful. Helpful, it's gonna be next Monday. And then, like we said, we're gonna have another late start. We'll be your second one next week. And then we have all of our fall sports, which right now is football, soccer, volleyball, cheer, girls swim, girls golf, hands and cross country and boys tennis. And right now we have our volleyball, which tonight is their senior night. They're currently in thirteen, ten and one. And then football is four, four. And soccer also has a game tonight, which is away, but that's eleven. Their record right now is eleven, six and two. And then tennis is three and six. And then what is happening in student council? We had a bake sale last Thursday to raise money for our student council camp that we're going on, hopefully just to bring down the costs for all members so it's more affordable. And our student council camp is the 23rd and the 24th of this month, which we're really looking forward to. As student council officers, so me and Claire and two others, Ben Meisner and Emily Kay, we will have a Flint Metro League meeting at Goodrich, which we will meet with a bunch of other officers from in our lady for other councils. And we're gonna talk about what we do, what they do, and just basically our councils, basically just kind of a giant workshop to figure out everything together. Right now, our council is planning service projects. Hopefully, we're gonna start getting them in this spring of things around end of November, beginning of December. And then we're also coming up with lots of fundraising ideas for future charity weeks and service projects and for our council and maybe raise money for ourselves. Our Angel Closet, which we opened almost a year and a half ago now, or started planning, is getting ready to open, which we're very excited for. Anyone that's not familiar with the Angel Closet, it's a closet within our school where if any student needs any formal wear, seasonal wear, day-to-day clothes, undergarments, hopefully soon, any hygiene products or any school supplies, they can go to the council office and request these things. And then people want a little shopping trip to our closet. All these items are donated, they're not purchased. So hopefully that'll be opening soon. It's very close to being open. And then we are also, our SEI Community Committee, which is Student Community Involvement, is planning a mental health week, hopefully in December. They actually had a meeting with students today about it. And we're looking at spring things, could be a whole week dedicated to mental health awareness.
Any questions? No, that sounds great. Thanks, thank you. Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up is Jesse Johnson, our athletic showcase.
Thank you for having me. Started off with my title is what happened, what's happening and what's going to happen. Personally, I could take a maximum of 10 minutes. I'm trying to run down the events that. I'm trying to keep it short. So what I went through in this is kind of to document a little of the things, a few of the events that we've had, the reason we had those events and share those, what we're doing now and some of the things that we have placed coming up in the future.
You do have a clicker if you'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have a clicker.
Oh, you like?
Yeah.
Which button?
Forward one.
Okay, there we go. So my biggest, after one year here, biggest thing I wanted to. I have my own philosophy, just like anybody that is a head of a program or head of a department. And I think thing was how do I share my vision, my thoughts? It's different from some people's, but I wanted to be able to share that vision with our stakeholders. One of those stakeholders when it comes to athletics, it's our teachers, it's our parents, it's our athletes. The only way I feel for this department to be successful is if we're all on the same page. To be on the same page, you have to have a whole class, you have to communicate. So that's. I have a good one with this clicker.
You want me to move it for you?
Yeah, can you please? Thank you. So my first event that I had was our meet the team night. I was nervous about it when we first did it. I was wondering, I put it out there numerous times, didn't hear much feedback. I was worried that 15, 20 people were gonna show up. It was very well received within the community. We had, I might be, I might be putting it a little low, but I said 300 or maybe even more people than that. And we filled the, we filled the PSC. It was very, very well received. Afterwards, I got a ton of compliments from people in the community saying this is what we needed. And some of those topics that we talked about were communication. Once again, communicating with our stakeholders. I wanted, I wanted everybody to know where I stood on certain subjects, what I thought, what I thought we needed, what I thought we were lacking and some of the things that I think we could improve on. And just trying to be as transparent with everybody as I could be. Information sharing at this event, team by team, department by department. Just for those that don't know how this went, is I spoke for roughly 30 minutes, had our trainer come up and speak, our sports boosters come up and speak. After a half hour, we went to 15 minutes where every individual and parents could go then, could then go to their fall coach. That fall coach had 20 minutes to speak with the parents, athlete, what to expect during the summer, what are team expectations? After 20 minutes, we discussed them, then they went to their, their winter sport, so on and so forth into spring sport. So they had a chance to meet with every coach. Every coach had every opportunity to meet with all their players and their families. Really just trying to springboard us into the summer workouts. Answering, answering questions, that was for me, from parents or it was for, say, for example, soccer. The parents wanted to know what fundraiser we were doing that year. That was the time to ask the coaches. Where we're, where we're currently at in the future, a vision for the future, that was something I shared with, with the families. Things are gonna be a little bit different than what they've been in the past. We're going to put a lot more work into the summertime. We're gonna, instead of just saying, hey, we play schedule, that's great. No, we're gonna try to be more competitive. How do we get? And sharing those visions. Once again, then we got into the summer schedules and meet, and meeting the coaches. Overall, this event was very, very well received. I got numerous people asking if we're gonna do it again. It is a, it is an event that I plan on doing numerous times. So we'll have it every year because obviously things change. But I want the community and the parents, the athletes, to be able to come up to me or our coaches and ask the questions before we get started on the season. Another part I talked about this is just the state of the continued improvement at this event. Find ways to put our coaches in a position to be successful. I'll send them to clinics. I said, this is information that I wanted our families to know about what we're gonna do in the athletic part. New way of thinking, how we do things, the weight room. I'll touch on that in a little bit. Summer workouts, camps, training sessions. We had more summer workouts this year in all sports that from, obviously I've been here that long, but judging from what other people have told me, it's, it was eye-opening for some people. What do you mean we lift weights in the summer? We have camps, we have clinics. It's things that haven't been done. And obviously, that can be a culture shock to some people, but I felt it was needed. And overall, I felt like it was, that the community enjoyed it. Giving every, every athlete opportunity to excel in their sport. More includes the middle school athletes and families. That was something that I thought was very, very important. If we only include these middle school athletes and parents and families, they're our future, for athletics. We have to, we can't neglect them. Majority of these kids, if they get neglected at middle school, they're gonna stop playing their sport. We're seeing that, we saw that with some of our sports in high school last year, where we should have JV and freshman teams and we're struggling to fill our student camp. Well, I put a lot of that is if they don't enjoy their experience in middle school, they're gonna stop playing in middle school. But once they stop playing in middle school, they're never gonna come back and play again at high school. So we need to take care of our middle school students. And that was a message I wanted to give across. I put it for multi-sport athletes. Something that I thought was a big issue here until I dove into the numbers is I didn't think we had very many athletes playing sports. I was dead wrong. We have a lot of athletes playing sports. We actually have more athletes playing sports than most schools you're gonna see. Problem is our athletes are playing one sport. So they might play soccer, they might play volleyball, but they don't play two or three sports. So that's the reason that we're seeing our numbers. And when you look across the board that we're not filling JV and freshman teams is because our athletes aren't playing one sport. So I'm really putting multi-sport athletes. Then once again, just to change the culture, a commitment to what you're doing. I know sometimes people think athletics are as important, but we're never gonna be good if we don't commit ourselves to something. I think that's true in life. That's what we're trying to do with these kids, push the life lesson. If you wanna be successful, something you need, you need to be committed to something. What have we changed thus far? And once again, I'll go back into we implemented offseason training. Not just in the summertime, our fall sports actually started training in March. So we're having four player, HSA allows four-player workouts with coaches. We, for example, for volleyball, we started those as soon as I heard the new coach, Taren, who's done unbelievable, she started four-player workouts. And we've been doing that with majority of sports. The sports in the fall, we've already talked about winter training. Now golf is one of those. We're getting golf simulators. We're going to be practicing golf all year long. Once again, that is to put our kids in a, in a place to be successful. Nine new varsity coaches. I'll be honest with you, I wasn't planning on doing that when I got here. But it was what was needed. So we fill those positions with people that have the similar, similar goals as myself. And so far, I think they're doing a great job. Film study room, something that we didn't have here previously. We put in room 103, if you wanna go take a look at it. That's couches all over the place. Big screen TV where we're able to get on, watch our huddle, scout other teams, scout ourselves. And I think this is a room that's gonna be continued to use more and more. I think it's vital if we wanna take the next step athletically. Has this made a difference? Just the change of thought, change of culture? So far, I'm gonna say yes. Almost every team is on pace to beat last year's win total for conference matches. Volleyball last week beat Goodrich for the first time and nobody can really give me an answer last time we beat them. And we beat them pretty handily. Last year, we, I believe we won three matches total in volleyball, for example. We implemented this training from March till the season started. We're at 14 wins right now. And I think we have a very good shot of winning the district, which is something that hasn't been done, I wanna say, what was it, 18 years? So I think we have a shot at winning the district. Football is going to make the playoffs. I expect us to win Friday, make the playoffs. I don't see us hosting, but we should make, we should get in. I'm gonna say soccer has a strong chance of winning the district, but unfortunately, I just left there to come here and we were down 2-0 and a half. Yeah, so tennis, best season in five years. We've, we finished, I wanna say it was third in our division. We haven't finished, we haven't finished above last and it was last four years that I've looked. I didn't go beyond four years, but first year that we haven't been done last in the division in four years and we've worked third in the division. Cross country, our boys won the Goodrich Invitational last week, last Saturday, and our girls took third in the small division. So once again, doing very, very well. What's on the horizon? Black Hawk Athlete Training. There's a program I started at my last school with, obviously different name, but I just wanna touch what this is. So this is gonna be a seventh through 12th, seventh grade through 12th grade program, boys and girls, all athletes are invited. This is not a football workout. I'll be ahead of this program, I'll be running this program. I wanna try to get as many athletes as we can. Will we lift weights? Absolutely. But it also is gonna add in plyometrics, it's gonna add in sprint work, conditioning, cardio. So there might be days where we do 45 minutes of abs straight. Every day we start with jump over. It's just things that I believe if you wanna be a good athlete, you need to have. And it's gonna push these kids, because there's gonna be days, I'm very honest and upfront with you, there's gonna be days they're not gonna wanna come back tomorrow, come back the next day, where I'm going to. Let's best wait for this. They're, they're gonna be hurting when they go home. But can they show up the next day? Can they show up the next day and put it behind them and say, you know what? I know I'm, my muscles are still hurting from yesterday, but I gotta be able to push through, I gotta persevere. That's, once again, what we're trying, if you wanna be a good athlete, something you have to have. And if you wanna be successful in life, in my opinion, it's what you gotta have. So this is a program that's gonna start on Monday. I am asking my coaches to join me. I'm asking every coach, whether they're middle school through high school, to come one day, one day a month. It's not very much. And support me while we're here. The reason I wanna do this is because, say, once, to go back to the multi-sport athletes. Say I don't play a winter sport, I wanna do a fall and a spring. Cool. If I have my, one of my winter, boys basketball, I have a boys basketball coach there, that's winter sport. You know what? I used to play basketball. I don't do anything in the winter. I really liked that, that boys basketball coach. I met him at this athlete training program. He's there every week, I'm gonna go play. Trying to build our numbers up through that program. That's the reason I want my coaches there with me. So I'm excited to get this off the ground. I'm hoping by June that we can have this up over 100 kids a day in that weight room. We did a ton of upgrading to the weight room, it's time to put it to use now. On the horizon, Athlete Signing Day. Once again, something that, it's an event that I put on in the past and I absolutely loved it. Instead of everybody, say you commit volleyball right now, most kids sign right now. You do it, you have one person at the table. It's very, very hard to get media to one kid to come sign their college scholarship. Very, very hard. We have eight to 10 kids signing to go to college to play sports. It's very easy for me to call up ages 12 and say, hey, we've got 10 people signing. They're gonna show up. I wanna make this an event where we cater food, we bring it in, we, we ask kids on teams to come, come support their teammates. And really just make it a very, very cool experience for everybody, where they sign their letter of intent to go to college. Obviously, it's not something I've done here yet, but we did pick up, we did pick a day, March 12th, that should fall between winter and spring seasons. So shouldn't have too many complaints about missing practice. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
Sounds great. I mean, I think that we've seen a lot of your fruits of your labor, especially just recently over homecoming. I mean, we all really enjoy that. You've done a great job, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Everybody goes to mine, I'm gonna grab my stuff and go live.
Thank you. Other comments and questions on the business? She's wonderful.
That's on the top of your.
Yeah, there we go.
Bye.
All right, so. Do we have any online? Oh.
Not that I can see. Is there a different indicator than comments?
Or.
Okay.
It's okay, if you go to the left, see where the green button is?
Yeah.
There's another spot to the left of that with three participants.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. If you can click that. Maybe not the arrow, but.
Oh.
That's hiding. What's thinking about?
Yeah.
Okay. And then right next to panels there too. See if anybody's got.
No, hey? No? All right.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yeah. Okay. Hope to. Shut up. Oh, no, sorry. Okay. Okay. General fund account table. Jane?
Take over the consent agenda, so you need to.
Oh, yeah. Okay, welcome to the agenda. Speak. Shout out to the people we need, would be in need for the motion. That's the thing. No, it's not here. You're all good. Move for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Before. Discussion? Can I get a roll call box? Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hillary, yes? Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, so. We can do information on discussion items, board report. Carly and I attended the Open County School Board Association Dinner last Wednesday and we really enjoyed it. I know I enjoyed it. There was, the whole presentation was on developing board norms and just your organization of, of your board and valuation of your board. And they talked a lot about education. I touched base with each of our board members and we're discussing on taking some board education classes to further some certifications, which, you know, hopefully we'll be able to accomplish over the school year. And that was, it was just really nice to, to go there and listen to other boards and their experiences and what they're doing to just strengthen their board. It's nice to have those meetings, something that I have, I don't know if everyone else. All right. And then education report.
Okay. Tonight, if I have a little help, my friends. It's a group show tonight, so come on up, you guys. We are gonna pay a little time this evening to go over our school district data with you. And we're gonna do a bodybuilding and then Dan Bobby will wrap up for what we would like to have school districts. Some of our points of pride and then the action items that we're gonna move forward with based on our data. So with that, I'll get started and we're gonna start. Right over here. As I said, to go over our achievement data for the last school year, 2022, 2023, to look at our growth data, and like I said, the points of pride and our areas for growth and our expansion. We'll start with Brandon High School, so Dan, Stephen.
Awesome. So thanks for having me tonight, everybody. I really appreciate it. So we always, all of us, will use many different things in order to help our students to improve. And one of those things that we use is data, with, from standardized testing data, from our homeschool, our own teachers' data, just a wide variety of data. So although it's not the end-all, this data is really important to us to analyze and to see where our kids' strengths and where their weaknesses are. And then to learn from that and have professional development with their teachers and how we can, how we can help our students to even become better. There's two pieces of data that the high school uses. There's one, there is SAT and PSAT. And PSAT and SAT, when you see these numbers up here, those are proficiency scores. So proficiency scores are according to their measures, how are we doing as compared to everybody else when it comes to being proficient in areas like English and math? And so when it comes to proficiency in PSAT and SAT, and I think that stuff is up here as well, we're doing pretty well. We have, we have a lot of room for improvement. We are doing pretty well. And if you look at that blue, that blue is us, that's BHS. If you look at the red, that's the state. And if you look at the green, that's the county. And we always like to measure ourselves to the county and to the state. When you look at Oakland County itself, Oakland County is one of the best educational counties in the whole state of Michigan. So that's a, that's big for us to, to look at how we measure up, not only with kids in the UPE, but our own county, kids, kids right around here. And if you look at this, in, in six of the, or seven out of the eight areas, we are above the state and above the county in those areas. Like I said, we still have a lot of room for improvement. We can still do better. But when you, comparatively speaking, we're doing, we're doing pretty well when it comes to proficiency in the areas of ELA, math. And then if you look over here in the 11th and 12th grade, that's social studies and science. That's measured, that's not measured by PSAT or SAT. That's measured by the MATE test. And if you look at the social studies, I was just talking to our social studies teachers a little while ago and congratulating them on, on how they basically knotted up the ballpark here when it comes, when it's compared to the rest of the state, to the state and the county, and how well we're doing. So I'm not gonna take a lot of time when I could go in depth with each one of these areas, but I won't do that unless you have any, any questions after we're done. That second growth measure, or that second data measure that we use is about growth. It's not necessarily about proficiency, it's about where do we start? And then when we, when we, when we hit a stop, where do we start? I'm sorry, if Amber's standing over here, I'm drifting. But, but, but it's where do we start? And then where do we finish? So what, what NWE does, which is a very valid and good test for our kids to see where they're at, is where do they start? And then how much are we expected to grow? And do we meet that measurement of expectational growth? We're still growing no matter what, but did we meet those, did we meet those expectations? So if you look at the top there, Language Arts, when it comes to reading, that diamond is where we were expected to be, based on NWE's calculations. The blue is where we really end up. So we outreached our expectations when it comes to ELA, both in ninth and 10th grade, 11th and 12th grade, you've not taken NWA at the high school. It's just ninth and 10th. If you look at math, we have some work to do. Although we still grew, we still grew as a ninth and 10th grade. We did not meet where the calculation says our expected growth should be. So that is gonna be definitely our focus here this year. So points of pride, we have a lot of points of pride at Brandon High School, things that we're very, very proud of, some of the things I've already mentioned. We ended up performing the state and the county in most areas, which we're very, which we're very happy about. And then, like I said, that is a good measure because as I talk to principals locally and I talk to teachers locally, that really gives us some good quality feedback at how we can improve. And when it comes to the student growth data, like I, I kind of already said these things, but we can look and say, and say them again. We, we outpaced in, in English, but not necess, not necessarily our math. Once again, we still grew, we just didn't grow as much as expected over the course of, of the year. Go ahead. So our action plan, this one, this one's big, am I too long?
No.
Sorry. So our, our action plan, we, that's, that's what we do. You know, we learn from where we're at, we learn what our strengths are and then we focus on our weaknesses to try to even get them done. So what are we doing? What are we doing about? We are bringing Oakland schools in and we are, oh my gosh, we're already, we've already had a great conversation with Oakland schools, they're experts there in math and English both. um, in math and English both, and they're coming in, and they're working with our teachers one-on-one, they're working with them in, in small groups, they're doing a fantastic job, our teachers are excited, they're, you know, to, to, to move forward, and they use what we know is our weaknesses and make them even our strengths, we're meeting with the middle school, we haven't had time to do that, past that much, we're meeting with the middle school, um, we're aligning our curriculum, we're working together as a united team, and not just the middle school, and just the high schools separately. We, uh, CPM is our, is our curriculum that we use, that's the name of the curriculum, it's called CM, CPM Math or CMP three at the middle school, so we're aligning that. Um, growth and proficiency of ELA eleven, um, we outpaced other grades, but we're still learning from where our, where our struggles were. We're updating texts, this board a couple of years ago approved new texts for our English department, the data came in on that, it was, it was great data, we're going to look and expand what you guys approved a couple of years ago into our ninth and tenth grade English, our English levels as well. Um, I'm going to refresh my memory on what this says. Um, after-school math tutoring, that's been something we've done over there, we're doing it Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, specifically to math with three different teachers, um, through, throughout this whole school year, it's already been well-attended and, um, and urging kids to attend that. And then we're having regular, regular data meetings, that all of us are doing, we're having actual data meetings where we sit down with teachers both individually and as small groups, to go over their individual data and our school-wide data, and then strategically planning together, individually and by department, on how we can even become better than what we are here. So, I summed up the high school, I think. I went really quick, any questions, any thoughts? Well, thanks.
All right, well, take.
You did.
Middle school, we have an air is out sick today, so I'll go ahead and go through the slides with you. As we move forward, and as we do move forward through all of the buildings, you're going to see some things that seem to be a bit repetitive, but we like to think of that as consistency, and also kind of showing you the threads of the initiatives and the different um, things that we are really focused on in this school year, so you'll see some things that you'll think are, are trends, and they are, they're things that we're making sure to do across all buildings. So, the Brandon Middle School achievement data using M-Stat shows um, right here, just where we were, sixth through eighth grade, um, math in ELA and sixth and seventh grades, and then eighth grade, that's the grade where they take all of those tests, the math, and then with ELA, social studies and science. When I get to the notes, I'll kind of highlight some of the information, you can see what Brandon is blue, and all of these slides that you'll be seeing, the state is red, and then green is the county data. There we go. When we look at BMS's growth data, Dan pretty much explained to you how that works, the diamonds where we want our kids to reach, you want to have that blue um, bar graph to reach and include and swallow up that diamond to show that we maybe have a growth that we predicted to make, and you can see at the middle school in both areas of reading and in math, um, we've got sport to do there, it's like a little bit of ground was gained in the mathematics area, uh, we're continuing to work in that area as well. What Dan was sharing about um, ELA, kind of math support at the open schools, um, consultant level, that is also, as he also kind of looked into already, coming down to the middle school level. The other part that's really exciting that I'll get to in the next slides is that our high school and middle school is really looking collaboratively together, which is a really great thing. So as far as the BMS points of pride look, um, when you look at that bar graph data, and you'll have those slides included for you to look at more carefully, you'll see that BMS did perform as well as, or outperformed the state in all M-Step tests except for ELA in sixth and seventh grades, but in all other areas, we did surpass the state, and we were pretty close to the county in some of those areas, however, we have not surpassed the county um, in one, although one area, one area we did, we slightly outperformed the county, our eighth graders did in the area of social studies. Um, Oakland Schools, as we talked about, is coming down to work with our teachers and instructional strategies and modeling for them, um, good mathematics instruction, and on top of that, um, I'll share a little bit more about what's happening with that when I get down to our action steps. Um, we also have a whole new math instructional team at the middle school, we have veteran, but new, new to us, but not new to what they do, um, so in sixth, seventh, eighth, and in our math lab as well, they're all brand-new staff, one moved up to fourth grade, so, but they're all moving to the school, so we're excited about that, and then also, um, we've got experienced special ed teachers working in a co-teaching role with the math lab, code, math lab teacher and the classroom teachers. As far as our areas of growth and our action plans, I'm not going to say it again, the Oakland Schools consultants, I think you've gotten the message on that, um, but we are really working covertly aligned that instruction with, between the BMS teachers and the VHS teachers. They have already met together, um, at the beginning of the year, the principals at both buildings, and myself have met with the Oakland Schools consultants, we're meeting um, in variety of groupings, all to discuss the same things um, at, from our different, with our different lenses and from our different management points. So that's something that we're working on doing regularly, it's going to continue throughout the rest of the school year. Um, CMP is the teacher and student resource at BMS, and that's something that our teachers are getting officially trained in, they are on to the area, or to the um, instruction here in Brandon, so they have all already engaged in different area levels of training in that resource. Um, the data meetings are happening across the district, so as soon as the NWA window closes, which was last Friday, so it's officially closed, they are going to be meeting individually with teachers and in small groups to really analyze the data and collaborative and work with teachers to make action plans based on their classroom data with their students. And then, um, part of the, the, um, just making a school successful is having those behaviors and the community of learners getting along together, and so we really think that PBIS is another action step, although not directly related to the content area of math in ELA, um, it definitely makes a big impact on what happens in our school, so continuing to work on that is another big action step for us. The other thing I skipped over is the um, math and reading lab, we're going to be working on that, um, with our teachers, but then the other, I have it in my last slide, I'll save that for the end, I'm getting my slides, I'm going to set up the captions, but I will pass it off now, I think it's over, I'll start looking at from this one. This does get a little bit repetitive, but I think that's also a good thing, because that means that we have really focused on point four, which is exciting. Um, the first slide, oh, I skipped one back, okay, first slide is M-Step, so in the elementary, that is our third through fifth grades, um, third and fourth take ELA and math, um, and then in fifth grade, they add on science and social studies. So we'll get to the highlights in just a second. And then our NWA data, that's where you can see all the students at elementary level, so pre-K, um, that shows blank, just because our junior kindergartners are bonded with our kindergartners, they are considered kindergartners, so K-five, you can see our NWA data, both math and ELA. So, a lot of really great highlights that Herbie's mentioned, um, our third grade outperformed the state both ELA and math, um, and in ELA, fifth grade outperformed both the state and the county, um, so it's always great to outpace the state, but like, um, my counterpart said, it's an actual bonus when we see the route, you're outperforming the county, and in science, our fourth grade outperformed the state and tied the county. And then if we're looking at NWA, so K through third and fifth, you have met or exceeded their projected growth in NWA, and then in math, K through third, you have met or exceeded their projected growth. So, we still have work to do, but it's exciting to see the growth that's there. Um, our areas for growth and action plans and math, um, these are going to be pretty similar, Kelly and I are working very closely together, but um, math recovery is something that a lot of our general teachers are now attending at open schools, it is being really, really well-received. Um, really going back to a lot of pedagogy around math instructions, we're excited about that work. Um, the math tutoring program that we shared with you last year, um, started mid-year, and we're getting ready to launch that right now, in the next couple of weeks, so we're excited to continue that program longer this year. The data meetings that were mentioned before with, um, will be focused around math this year. Um, we also have the open school support, um, we have the counterpart to the secondary, um, consultant is coming in, being with us, we're really utilizing her on those late start days, um, she's also been in my building doing some videotaping and working with individual teachers, and then at the principal lab that we did at the elementary level the last couple of years, we're now expanding um, to the secondary level too, and we'll be, we'll be focused on math. Um, in ELA, um, we are doing uh, some real intentional planning and learning layouts around our ELA resource, which is the music conference units to study, um, and we had some trainers for the Teachers College coming to work with our K-five staff this year, um, they're each doing five days of training. Um, we have coaching for our literacy leader, Annie Muller, um, and specifically right now, that's what, near, she's working with all of our new teachers. Um, our database interventions, we meet regularly with our intervention team and send our interventions, our interventionist to where the area of need was, um, so that's a little bit of shift, when I got here two years ago, they were kind of spread evenly, so now we're working really to put our interventions where the need is, so we're supporting kids that need it most. And then, um, continuing to work around phonics and phonological awareness, we have a couple of teachers who are highlighting some word study programs this year. And then, like Quay had mentioned, that PBS, PBIS keys, um, when we see that increased motivation, we know that it's going to increase engagement, um, the work that we're doing around those top traits, um, the work we're doing as a district, we're already seeing um, the changes in behavior, um, the kids wanting to be at school, and we know that when those things are happening, we're going to start seeing those types of growths.
Awesome, thank you, hello. So, a lot of, I don't want to be too repetitive, so you can come read our points of pride as we're looking at the graph, um, so this is Oakwood's, um, achievement data from M-Step, um, and thinking about things that some highlights, our third and fourth grade ELA outperformed the state, and again, the colors are the same, so the state's in red, county's in green, um, Oakwood is in blue, uh, fourth grade ELAs surpassed the county by twelve, um, point five percent, and then third grade math outperformed both the state and the county, which I think, um, i- is really something that we want to continue to lift as we're focusing on math as a big initiative, as those kiddos continue on to fourth and fifth grade. Um, so for our growth data, um, ELA, K and second grade met projected growth, um, and then for ELA, and then for math, which is on the bottom, um, kindergarten, third and fourth met or exceeded the projected growth. So, some points of pride, um, those are the ones I just read to you, so areas for growth, very similar to what everyone has spoken about, specifically Jessica. Um, so our district PD again, around, um, supporting our current curriculum within, um, Bridges Math, and we have Samantha Kiesling, she's the consultant serving us within the elementary level, um, really focusing on increasing in number sense through number corner with a variety of strategies, um, when you heard Jessica talking about being video recorded, um, we have a, a, a teacher who's really excited to have that is something that we can kind of really watch and lift, um, and pull strategies from. Um, grade level data team meetings, um, these are, have always been three times per year, um, sometimes individuals, sometimes in groups, um, but really thinking about three times per year in grade level teams for collaborative discussions around data, just to bring about desired outcomes, um, to really increase that engagement, which will help support, um, achievement overall. Continuous collaboration and review of transferable skills, this will be through principal labs, which I'm excited to participate in for the first time this year. Um, a lot of authentic ongoing action research implementation through, um, data team meetings and conversation and work that we're doing, uh, within our late starts. Um, again, the math recovery training, um, and the math tutoring program, um, that is currently being offered. For ELA, for areas of growth, again, the Teachers College Professional Learning and Labs, they actually start next week, we'll have two consultants coming on out. Um, intervention, so out of the classroom with our literacy specialist and, um, additional interventions pulled, and then pushing coaching for a lot of tier-one supports by our literacy leader, um, and just modeling, um, you know, appropriate strategies and ways to keep kids engaged and, um, with everything new that's continually rolling out, and then finally, the overall goals to increase engagement and motivation um, through our cultural shift within PBIS, which Jessica had mentioned, um, and it's, it's really taking over, um, we can see it, we feel it, we hear it, um, and then we have, again, one of our Oakland Schools consultants, Amber Zar, she's already come out and kind of done a little prescreener with us, that we can look at, um, our post-data to see our areas of growth in the future, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's wrapped it all up. This one is a big one of our whole entire district, um, this is similar to the one that you had last year, so it looks familiar, and again, I'll have more time to look at it, but the circle is, um, indicating areas at which the Brandon School District outpaced the county and the state, and then those indicated by the diamond with rhombus, if you want to use the current math, mathematical term word, um, indicate where we've outpaced or outperformed the state. And this was another way we looked at our data, um, significantly behind grade level, um, those who are, this was really coming out of the pandemic, I think, right before, um, looking at how we, um, how much loss was, how much loss did our students incur after I mean, the pandemic, and so, looking at it again this year was really, um, helpful for me, and that I started to look at, uh, how did we start off this year with our, our loss? For those who are labeled significantly behind grade level, and did those percentages go down from last fall to this fall, you could see, looking, um, from fall to spring, you know, reading and math, in most cases, where we started, we ended up in a better place at the end of that, of the year, um, for reading and math all the way down, there might be one place where I think we see the same, sixth grade, um, math, it, they kind of started and ended the same, but in most cases, there was, um, improvement in that. Our points of pride is that we did outperform the county in some areas, and the state in several areas, and as was noted last year, prior to two thousand and nineteen, we didn't outperform the county in, in any areas really, and so, we're still maintaining that, and we're still outperforming our, our county council parks in some areas, which is great, and that's definitely not something we want to lose, we want to keep doing that. Um, the Brandon School District saw a significant decline in the students considering significantly behind grade level from the fall of twenty-two to the spring of twenty-three, and they had the grade levels that I just showed you, and when I, um, was looking at last year's data table and lighting it next to this year's, then, one of the things I noticed is that the gap is closing for many of our grade level cohorts, um, as those who are labeled significantly behind grade level. As an example, um, last year, twenty-eight percent of our third graders were significantly behind, I, I hope you didn't quote something during that, in the fall of twenty-two, but this year, that same cohort as fourth graders, they're starting off when you consider summer loss, and how they're starting the year, we're down to seventeen percent of them starting off with that kind of, um, identification. So, I noticed that as a trend a little bit for some of the grade levels, and I thought I'd highlight that one. And then, most of these have already been mentioned, um, I do want to highlight the fact that, um, we are going to be collaborating K-12 in a lot of different ways, the principals K-12 are collaborating together, and we're working together, facilitated in the principal lab, um, specifically around the area of mathematics, um, and the teachers as well are working together, but with Harvey teachers have been working together, um, and now the middle school and high school teachers collaborating together. We collaborate, it's one of our core beliefs, and we're really moving into it, and we really expect that to help us to, you know, work smarter, not harder, and to get, get moving on some of these targets that we've been moving, yeah. It's a show, lots of growth. So, in a nutshell, there's a little bit of delay, but we are branded, I'm a black cock, that's part of our, I guess it's like becoming our hawk motto, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's almost a callback thing, you know, like, go green. We are branded. And then you go, I'm a black cock. Uh, thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. Thank you.
Financial reports. Good evening, tonight we have Chris Saub from Plant Ranch, who is our, um, the official manager.
Principal.
Principal, y'all. Like a manager, I don't know, yeah. Um, and he is here to, to fill some highlights from.
Thanks, you know, and thanks for having me, I think I've been working with the district for eight or nine years, so happy to be here again with you all, um, and happy to report on some very good audit results, so, um, just to give you some background, uh, every year, all local districts are subject to an audit of the financial statements, and our audit is for the year on June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three, so it's the twelve months ended June thirty. So in your board packet, you should have three deliverables, the first is our audit report of the, uh, of the basic financial statements, and that's really covering, uh, the audit of the funds, so the general fund, capital projects, bond debt service fund, all the different funds that the district uses to manage its operations. Second deliverable we have each year is a single audit report, that's an audit of the major federal programs. Uh, so for any. So for any district that receives over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding. They're subject to a single audit. And so this year, we audited the education stabilization fund, which is better known as ESSR. That was a large pool of COVID relief money that most districts in the state receive. Happy to report for our single audit, we had no findings or question costs related to this. Related to that funding. That was about over a million dollars of expenditures this year. Also have a report on the. Yeah.
Sorry, this is the PDF. I just need your spoiler.
You can, you can start at the beginning.
Okay, here you go.
Related to the audit of the financial statements, again, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance that we can give as auditors. We also did not identify any internal control deficiencies. So kind of bringing it all together, given the significant amount of federal funding that's come through the door. The additional strings attached that go along with ensuring that those funds are used appropriately. It's really quite a feat to have such a clean audit. I think we got it done earlier this year than we did last year. So thanks to Jan and her team for being so well prepared. So the presentation I'm going to walk through here really is going to lay out the results of the general fund. That's the district's primary operating fund. And so the first slide we have here looks at the general funds revenue for the fiscal year ended two thousand twenty three compared to the prior fiscal end two thousand twenty two. So starting at the top, you'll see federal revenue this year of just over two million dollars compared to prior year of two point nine million dollars. So a drop of about eight hundred thousand dollars. That's really attributable to the continued use of the COVID relief dollars. So as you know, as we'll talk about, those are really one-time funds. Those do not recur once they are spent. Next is local revenue, which is primarily property tax revenue. That came in at three point three million dollars, which would increase to about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from prior year. The largest pot of money that all districts receive is state dollars. And really what's in this twenty point six million dollars is the state foundational allowance, which is the per pupil amount that the district gets. And we'll talk about what that is. It's about nine thousand dollars per pupil. And additionally, the state funds different categoricals and state grants that come through that line item as well. And you'll see I have a star next to state revenue. And what's important to note here, I'll see if, no, this is going to work here. We broke, it's not going to show on the screen. That twenty point seven million dollars excludes what's referred to as this UAL one forty seven C money. Really what this is, is money that the state is providing school districts that get passed right through to the retirement system. So the current Michigan teacher retirement system is underfunded by about twenty five to thirty billion dollars. The state has recognized this and their mechanism for filling that gap is to provide some of this one-time money. So it's really coming from the state and ending up in the retirement system, but the mechanism to do that is to fund it through the local district. So what that means is this year, Brandon received three point two million dollars of this state money that just goes right out the door to the retirement system. So that means that's, that's three million dollars of revenue that comes in. They really have no decision making to do with. So it's in the revenue, but it's also in the expenses. That's no impact of fund balance. So that twenty point seven million you're seeing is net of that money. So we wanted to present, what is the change from last year? Excluding this one-time money, because you really can't do anything with it. Lastly is inter-district sources of one point three million. That was about a hundred thousand dollars less than last year. The majority of that is PA eighteen special education money that comes from Oakland schools. Want to go to the next slide there. So we talked about the revenue. This slide captures the expense side of the income statement. So again, looking at two thousand twenty three compared to two thousand twenty two. You'll see instructional expenses came in at about seventeen million, which was about two million dollars more than last year. And again, keep in mind that increase is, is organic increases to some of your costs, but also the increase in the funding of this one forty seven C. So maybe what I didn't point out is the increase in that funding from last year to this year was one point three million dollars. So the revenue went up by one point three million, but also your expenses did as well. And in that instruction lineup, and this primarily teacher salaries, wages, benefits. Substitute teacher expenses, things that are really benefiting the classroom supplies and materials as well. Support services came in at eleven point two million, which was an increase of about one million from last year. Included in support services, there's costs like counselors, administrators, support, maintenance staff, contracted transportation services. Yeah, athletics there as well, consistent with last year, about seven hundred thousand. And then lastly, debt service, capital outlay and other payments to other public schools was about one point five million dollars, a small decrease from last year. So in total expenses for the general fund were thirty point five million dollars compared to twenty seven point two prior year. This is looking at the district's final amended budget, which was adopted in June of two thousand twenty three compared to the actual results. So that far left column is that budget. So going into June, the district budgeted for revenue of thirty one point seven million and expenditures of thirty one point six million. So the budget was intended to show an ending fund balance at the end of the year, four point three million dollars. Actual results were almost dead on, four point three two was the ending fund balance. You'll see there were some differences in the revenue and the expense side of it. So revenues came in less than expected by about one million and so did expenditures. Really the reasoning behind that is the budget includes the full amount of some of the federal and state grant awards. Some of those don't always get used in that fiscal year. They just carry over next year. And so that, call it extra million, could be spent in fiscal twenty four in both the revenue and the expense side. So really the, the budget was within twenty one thousand, which is really awesome when you can, you think about budgeting for thirty point six billion dollars of revenue. This was a slide we added a couple of years ago, kind of paint the picture of all of the, the COVID relief non-recurring funding that's coming. If you scroll down just a little bit. So what this is showing is in total, and this funding started in fiscal twenty one. In total, the district was awarded three point four million dollars of this COVID relief money. Mainly these ESSR dollars, which are, you know, ESSR two, ESSR three, they come with some of these different titles, but really it's one pot of money that can be used for different things within the district. And today through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty three, the district spent one point nine million dollars of that. You'll see the largest remaining pot of money left is ESSR three. The award amount there was two million. The district spent eight hundred and seventy five thousand through June thirtieth. So we've got about another million five to spend between ESSR three and ESSR three state equalization dollars. And those are available to be spent through September of two thousand twenty four. So really fiscal twenty four is the last year that these dollars will be used. And there's no more COVID relief money. So really important to be aware of that, that again, this is not expected to recur. This slide is just showing the trend over the last nine or ten years of the percentage of general fund dollars that are going towards instructional services. So really what this means is for fifty six cents of every dollar that's spent is really benefiting the classroom. So that's going towards teacher salaries, wages, supplies, books, reading materials, curriculum. And you can see as the revenue has changed over the year, the district's been good in keeping that that allocation towards the instructional expenditures, which is really benefiting the kids in the classroom. So when you take your revenue, less your expenditures, you end up with your fund balance. And so this slide shows the trend in fund balance over the last nine years. You notice the last several years have remained steady. It's been the district's policy that any surplus in the general fund over the last couple of years has been transferred out to help pay for the installment purchase agreement as well as the energy bond. This year, the district added slightly to that fund balance. So it was about four point three million dollars. And you'll see we have a couple of different colors going on here. So within that four point three million dollars, two million of it has been assigned for capital projects. So that's money that the district has wanted to carve out and say, call it specifically for those capital improvements. So that money cannot be deployed for any other purposes unless the board decides to, to do otherwise. That leaves an unassigned fund balance of that difference, which is about two point three million dollars. So there's a couple of metrics that districts as well as the state look at fund balance. So you'll see your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is about fourteen point two percent. And that's right around what MSGO, which is the Michigan School Business Officials recommends. They recommend about a fifteen percent fund balance. Quite honestly, not a lot of districts hit that mark. So to be right hovering right around that mark, this means you have a really healthy fund balance. I did just add one comment. If you exclude that one-time UAL retirement money, you're really at fourteen point seven percent. So your expenditures are higher because of that money that you can't really do anything with. So when you kind of peel that back, you're at fourteen point seven. So kind of get you close to that fifteen percent out recommendation. Couple other ways to think about fund balance. If, if the district didn't get one more dollar of revenue, that fund balance on a three hundred and sixty five day year lasts you about fifty two days. On a hundred and eighty day school year, that fund balance would give you about twenty six days of, of operating expenditures. So just kind of one other lens to, to think about it. I'm sure as you all are aware, enrollment has been declining at, at the district and, and really this is a statewide issue. So at last data, I checked for fiscal twenty three statewide enrollment was down about a half a percent. This fiscal year, about forty four students, which was about two percent of the pupil count. And, and so over the last ten years, there's been a loss of about eight hundred and sixty two students. Just to kind of put that in perspective, if you take that eight hundred and sixty two student count multiplied by the foundational allowance, which is that, that per pupil funding that the state provides, which was nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. That would equate to a loss revenue of about seven point eight million dollars over that last nine or ten years. Now, somewhat out of context there, because if you had those additional students, you'd have additional teachers, you'd have, you'd have additional supplies, curriculum expenses. So it wouldn't necessarily mean seven point eight million dollars to the fund balance. But you can kind of see those are significant dollars lost as a result of that declining. Then lastly, this is just showing the trend in the foundation allowance. Again, that per pupil amount that comes from the state over the last ten years. So it was about seven thousand dollars ten years ago. Through June thirtieth of twenty three, the district was at nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Going into fiscal twenty four, all districts received a four hundred and fifty eight dollar increase to their foundation allowance. So that would mean Brandon is going to be at about ninety six hundred dollars per pupil, which is about a five percent increase from last year. So while fund balance has been increasing steadily over the last several years, I think it's important to put that into context too, because as we all know, inflation has been high. So costs have been actually increasing at a rate higher than what your fund balance has been going up by. So if you really projected inflation across the top of this, you probably to keep track with inflation, you're probably needing a fund balance or a, a foundation allowance of about twelve thousand dollars. So although it looks like you're getting additional money, which you are, it has not kept up with inflation and the cost that it takes to just keep the doors open and keep things functioning as they should. That is all I had prepared for you all today. That may answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. That was really important. Do you want to have any questions? Great job, fans. That's a cold start.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Making our action item. Approval of fiscal year twenty twenty three audited financial statements. Move the Brandon Board of Education through fiscal year twenty twenty three, audited financial statements as presented. Any discussion?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of human resource report.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the human resource report as presented, support.
Any discussion? May I have a vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of VHS STEM teacher as an authorized purchase card user.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the VHS STEM teacher as an authorized purchase card user in the amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars as presented.
Any discussion? Oh. Sorry. So my discussion. May I get a vote call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hillary, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
Approval of playground equipment purchase.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the Oakwood Elementary's small playground equipment purchase for landscape structures. In the amount not to exceed a hundred and four thousand two hundred and sixty two dollars and forty cents as presented.
For. May I get a vote? Herb, any discussion? May I get a vote call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hillary, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
Harvey Swanson furniture purchase PO.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve the Harvey Swanson furniture purchase PO as presented.
For. Any discussions? May I get a vote call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hillary, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
Right. So we go to citizens input. Okay, all right. And now. Oh. Jessica, did you see anyone's hands raised up there?
No.
All right. Now, approve of the go to closed session.
Move the Brandon Board of Education, approve to enter a closed session for the purpose of negotiations and security.
For. Any discussion? Can I get a vote call vote?
Jane?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Hillary, yes, Rebecca?
Yes.
All right. So.